Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of Brisbane Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, June 22, 2017. I will, I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
President.
Commissioner Cunningham.
President.
Commissioner Mackin.
President.
Commissioner Munir.
Here. Okay, we move on to item, the adoption of agenda. Anybody has any changes that they want to make?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, no changes. Then we move on to the consent calendar. The items on the consent calendars are considered routine and will be acted upon collectively by one motion adopting the planning department's recommendation unless a member of the commission or public or its staff asks to remove an item to discuss it prior to the motion. The chairperson will ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. So this is your opportunity. Anybody wants to remove any items from the consent calendar?
I do not.
There's only one item there. None?
Nope.
Okay, the item that we will be with is on the consent calendar is approval of draft action minutes of May 25, 2017, regular meeting. Anyone has any comments or any changes? Nothing? So who wants to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the minutes from the regular meeting of May 25, 2017.
Okay, we have a motion from the Commissioner Anderson.
A second motion.
We got two seconds. So I guess, second from which one now?
Colin.
Colin. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries. Oral communication. At this time, anyone in the audience wants to speak before the commission on the items that are not on the agenda, please feel free to come to the podium. Don't be shy. If there is anything you want to discuss, please come over. If not, then we move on to the written communication. And I got this package from Hart as a written one. And in our package, we had memorandum regarding the workshop draft parkside at Brisbane Village Precise Plan, plan, resolution PC 3-17 to change regular planning commission meeting to meeting days, and the correspondence from Commissioner Munir regarding public planning commission work program items, as well as when we come in here, we had additional, this document here, all of you got this one here too, parkside plan, draft parkside plan at Brisbane Village Precise Plan. I like the word precise. That's very interesting. Okay, those are the written items. Anybody else got anything else? And also, we got this big, big document here that shows in detail about the parkside at Brisbane Village. Okay? So now, we will start with the workshop. Before we start the workshop, I'd like to remind that this is not a public hearing. Basically, what this is, is just to let you know what's going on with the parkside, just give you a brief outline. And the staff member that's going to be presenting that is Julia. She's, she has done a lot of-
Before I do, are your monitors working?
My monitor, uh... Have we turned them on?
Yes.
It's working.
Good.
Okay.
No.
So yours is not working, Commissioner?
Nada. Oh, I tried.
Okay. So again, this is not a public hearing. Planning commission will not deliberate on the draft plan. That means you will not have any opportunity to criticize or comment on anything on the plan except what is presented here tonight, just for the, if you want to clarify any, any items. And the questions of the public may be submitted at the chairperson's discretion. So you got that, all of you. So with that, we'll start with staff Julia, I guess. You will be presenting the draft parkside at, parkside at Brisbane Village Precise Plan. Make sure it's precise.
Do my best. All right. So good evening, commissioners. So our agenda tonight is short and sweet. We are going to review the planning process for the parkside precise plan, which is before you tonight, for our workshop. We are going to discuss how the draft plan itself is organized, what it's actually proposing, its contents. And then, at that time, we'll take any questions from commissioners on, you know, clarification, items of clarification. But as Commissioner, Chairperson Munir said, we are not actually entertaining discussion tonight. There's no deliberation. And also, at the chairperson's discretion, we can take questions from the public. So again, our reminder, this is not a public hearing. However, we can confirm that the public hearing will take place July 18, which is a special meeting. It's a Tuesday, and that'll be at 7:30 PM as your normal start time. So here's just a overview of the parkside plan area, which hopefully everyone's familiar with. So it's about 25 acres, and it covers properties along Park Lane, Park Place, Old County Road, and Bay Shore. And here's a brief summary of how we got here, and this is, the parkside plan has actually, parts of it have been in the works for years. So going all the way back to 2005, when PPS sponsored a placemaking workshop with the community, which among many of the areas it looked at in Brisbane were areas within the parkside plan area.
May I ask if you can, what is PPS, so that people here can understand what we're talking about?
People's Project for Public Spaces.
Okay.
And then going back to 2011, when the city council formed the Economic Development Subcommittee, which has been a key partner in the parkside plan process. The city also identified a housing element in 2011 for the previous planning cycle that identified some of the same properties that are in the parkside plan for residential, future residential development. The implementing zoning was never adopted for that particular housing element. In 2014, the city worked with the Urban Land Institute to hold a technical assistance panel, which looked primarily at Crocker Park. This is a all-volunteer, land use professionals, economists, looking at land use and design issues. It also touched on the Brisbane Village Shopping Center as well. And then, the real reason why we are here tonight, the council adopted the 2015 housing element in April 2015, which designates future residential development along Park Lane and mixed use along Park Place to meet the state-imposed Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, requirements to adopt housing zoning. So following the housing element adoption, in July 2015, the council actually kicked off the parkside at Brisbane Village Precise Plan, planning process to both implement the housing element and take a more holistic view of the entire, basically neighborhood that those new housing opportunity sites would be a part of. So here's just an overview of our schedule. We started in the fall of 2015. We are hoping to conclude with the plan review and adoption this summer. So just an overview of the community engagement. So we really started things with a bang in October 2015 with our community workshop number one. We called it the pop-up workshop. This was held on Old County Road, right in the middle of the plan area. So a little bit of a different workshop than we've done in the past. At this workshop, we had a variety of activities, stations. We also had food and entertainment. We got a lot of feedback at that workshop regarding what people really were looking for in terms of the mix of land uses, physical building form, architectural styles and densities, what kind of retail development was desirable. We also got some opinions overall on the housing situation in Brisbane, which many viewed housing as unaffordable. We also looked at some circulation improvements, including pedestrian and bike connections. Another key component of our workshop was to talk about what a healthy community is and how we could plan for community health throughout, through the parkside plan process with our partners, with the Sameteo County Health System. Here's just a photo of some of your neighbors putting stickers on boards. We followed up from the pop-up workshop with additional outreach on Brisbane Town Hall, which was a basically online forum hosted through the city's website, and we asked some questions for feedback from community members who weren't able to attend the pop-up. Then we had our second formal workshop that was called the Building Blocks Workshop. So basically, this was a discussion of existing conditions, land use, economics, circulation, followed by a real-time voting exercise. So participants were given remote clickers where they were allowed to basically vote for a variety of polling questions that were presented to them, and the results showed up in real time. So we copied some of the slides from that, the results of those questions, for a couple of those questions, you can see, it was very interesting to see how the answers were broken down after we asked questions. The next segment of community engagement was a citywide survey. So we published this online. We also published it in hard copy in The Star, which does go to every household in Brisbane. And it was a non-scientific survey, and it was supposed to kind of confirm or suss out, you know, reaction to the results of the February workshop. So most of the questions there were actually focused on asking people to react or confirm whether or not they agreed, or their reactions to the, the answers that their peers gave at the February workshop. So kind of parallel to the whole community engagement process, the main consultants for this project, which are MIG, they have multiple subs who are working under them. One of those subconsultants is Strategic Economics. They are economists, and they provided fiscal and economic feasibility analysis. So one component of that analysis was a real estate market study, which basically tested what land uses the private sector, so for-profit developers, would deliver in, considering the current market. It also provided some information for the city as to what actions the city could do to facilitate the actual development. Another component of their analysis looked at the feasibility of retail development in the parkside area. So it identified, you know, some constraints to retail growth. One of those things being that our existing retail area at Brisbane Village wasn't super accessible from Bay Shore, may not be visible to passing traffic along Bay Shore Boulevard. And then overall demand also being a little bit low from the traditional retailer side of things, or a chain retailer, the city's population being fairly low, and although we do have a significant worker population, overall, just not meeting those thresholds that chain stores or larger stores are really looking for. However, they did also identify many opportunities for the kind of retail services that the community expressed interest in. One of those things was a food co-op, or a nonprofit grocery option, which would not have the same constraints when it came to locating in terms of population and other locational constraints. We also looked at how you could potentially improve the design of what's already there, to be more attractive, to actually be more accessible. So for example, by providing direct access from Bay Shore, that could probably attract more usage and patronage. And the third part of the analysis looked at the feasibility of residential development, which unsurprisingly, the market is very strong for residential development right now, not only in the Bay Area but in the city itself. They looked at several different pro formas and recent development that had been approved in the city, and they found that, in general, townhomes are very feasible, the densities that are envisioned in the housing element. They did find that mixed use development, which was proposed for the parcels along Park Place, was challenging at the scale and density that was contemplated in the housing element. But overall, a strong residential market. So another parallel component to the community engagement process and the planning process was looking at this plan as an opportunity to advance community health. And we did work, as I mentioned, with our partners at Get Healthy Sameteo County, which is part of the county health system. Community health planners staffed our pop-up workshop and the workshop number two at City Hall to provide education and awareness, provide Brisbane-specific data where possible on community health. And some of the primary parts of the healthy community planning process you would, you'll see in the plan is a focus on stable and affordable housing, thriving and inclusive economy, and healthy neighborhoods. The county will be providing an assessment of how the plan reacts and responds to those parts of the healthy planning framework, which you will see prior to the public hearings. So after the community engagement kicked off, and MIG had a lot of community feedback to work with in addition to all of the economic analyses, they crafted three different conceptual land use and design frameworks. So basically, what these alternatives were, showed potential layouts, mix of uses, one even showed an alternative street configuration for visitation. And these were presented to the community and council at a check-in session in June of 2016. So you can see the three options here. And here's just a summary, and obviously, out of the three, Alternative C was a very intense version, did not gain any traction at public hearings. So during the council's discussion, they, they identified that Alternatives A and B, they'd like to discuss in more detail. At a later time, they wanted to see some more actual photo simulations and ideas of what would those alternatives really look like if they were built out. So MIG took that feedback and came back in September of 2016 for another check-in meeting, where they did present several photo simulations and massing studies of the different development alternatives for A and B. So this shown right here on the screen is a view from down Park Lane, looking west, so toward the mountain. And that was from Alternative B. So this shows townhomes on Park Lane, and then multifamily at the very end. And this is one of the views from Old County Road, looking west, again, Alternative B, looking at a re-envisioned and reconfigured Brisbane Village Shopping Center. And it also shows potential bike and ped improvements with dedicated bike lanes and So at this meeting, council members Davis and O'Connell also presented an alternative that they had created themselves, which is excerpted here on the screen. Basically, their alternative showed a lot of their preferences for breaking up buildings into smaller, individual smaller buildings rather than large blocks. They also preferred to see shorter building walls facing the street. They really emphasized the importance of having view corridors throughout a property rather than having large buildings taking up the entire center of a lot. They also wanted to emphasize pedestrian connections, and another key part was adding a community garden, which in this is shown, oh, there's my pointer, at the end of Park Lane, adjacent to what's, what's now 145 Park Lane. So these were components that they, they wanted to bring up for, for the full council's consideration. So after looking at MIG's photo simulations and considering council members Davis and O'Connell's comments and their alternative, the council's direction was basically to split up the plan policy approach. They requested that the two council subcommittees, the Economic Development Subcommittee and then an ad hoc committee of council members Davis and O'Connell, to focus on separate sections of the plan, and for the plan itself to have more of a vision for the commercial areas and actual policies and regulations for the housing areas. So that was a pretty significant direction influencing how the plan was shaped. In the winter of, last winter, October through December, MIG and staff met with the subcommittees, so Economic Development Subcommittee and the ad hoc Subcommittee, to kind of refine their ideas and input, and that informed the draft plan, which is, has been released, is now ready for review. So now, we're going to dive into the draft plan itself, unless there's any questions, if you guys, okay?
Anyone has any questions?
No.
About?
About how we got here?
No. I'm asking anyone in the audience want to ask any questions so far? It's pretty clear? Okay.
Okay. All right. So in the main event. So there is five chapters in the draft plan. First, introduction. The second sets the actual land use and design framework, so it emphasizes all of the different components of the community feedback that we received, shaped by all of the economic analysis and sort of planning best practices and plan goals. The actual development standards are in chapter three. So again, these are development standards for the residential component only. These are in the form of residential overlay zoning regulations. No zoning changes are proposed for the commercial areas. So that's important to remember. So the development standards are really the physical development standards that will control the form, materials, design, that sort of thing, of the residential development. Chapter four presents design guidelines for both the residential development and the commercial area. So that's where the commercial vision is really fleshed out, is in chapter four. So these are guidelines for the physical form of new development. And then, chapter five is how the plan will actually work. How will it be administered? How will it be adopted? So we'll kind of go through each chapter. So again, chapter two, it lays out the foundation for implementing the community's vision. So it identifies the areas of change in the, in the parkside plan area and articulates key site design concepts. So that's this graphic here, which takes, it's a new iteration, so taken from the three alternatives we started with in June, coupled with the feedback from the Economic Development Subcommittee and the ad hoc Subcommittee with council. This is ultimately the conceptual, you know, using all of those inputs on how buildings should be laid out, what kind of connections do we want in terms of circulation, pedestrian pathways, that sort of thing. This is all illustrated in this plan. This isn't a master plan. It's, it's a concept, basically, that's kind of taking everything from chapter three and chapter four and illustrating what it could look like, look like it build out. So one of the things that I want to point your attention to, and again, I'm going to use my pointer, sorry. So this area here is the commercial vision area. So we know it today as the Brisbane Village Shopping Center here, and 125 Valley Drive is right here, roughly. So the commercial vision that was ultimately decided on was to incorporate potentially a boutique hotel, and this is roughly at 125 Valley Drive. And then, some, splitting up the retail portion of Brisbane Village Shopping Center, so breaking up those buildings and having them actually closer to the street with parking, shared parking, all within. It also proposes some act, direct access from Bay Shore Boulevard, so be right in, so cars could only turn right. And enhanced entrance and exit here on Old County, roughly where the entrance and exit is today. And then this building here potentially could be some sort of brewery or other experiential retail kind of establishment. So that's the commercial area. So in between the commercial area and the residential, they've proposed a community gathering space, plaza, park. Again, this is all conceptual, but I think the important thing is that there be some sort of buffer between this commercial area and our new residential buildings. This part of the plan here, along Park Lane and Park Place, is where the new residential development and zoning overlays would apply. So along Park Place, these are proposed as townhomes or small lot developments. And one new thing as well that hasn't been displayed before is using 280 Old County Road, which is the current post office site. So this wasn't identified in the housing element, but it was brought up by both subcommittees as something they wanted to consider if it meant that they could spread out density potentially from the five sites originally identified. So this is something MIG incorporated into the conceptual framework, and it is proposed under the overlay zoning designation. And then along Park Lane, this is proposed for more traditional multifamily housing So how do we get to that conceptual land use and design framework we just looked at? So chapter three contains the residential development standards. So these are the physical standards for new residential development. It includes the actual overlay zoning regulations. And the zoning regulations are proposed as two different overlay zones. And that really came out of, again, the work with the ad hoc council Subcommittee, where we realized there really were two kind of distinct types of housing products that were desired. And it seemed the best way to actually ensure that those are the product types that got built was to have actually two different zones with different development standards that, when applied, would make sure you got those products that you wanted. So the PAOZ1 overlay zone, which, sorry, I don't have the map here again, so the PAOZ1, oh, actually, is here, along Park Place, as well as 280 Old County Road. So again, that's a townhome or small lot, kind of tiny home type of development. And then the PAOZ2 zone would be traditional multifamily development along Park Lane, so 91 to 145 Park Lane. So what is an overlay zone? An overlay zone is applied over the underlying zones. So right now, the properties in the overlay zones are Zone TC1. That's our Crocker Park Trade Commercial District. So with adoption of an overlay zone, the underlying TC1 district would remain. The owners of those properties do not have to redevelop their properties to comply with the new overlay zones. They can choose to continue maintaining them under the current zoning. So the overlay zone truly gives flexibility to property owners. It doesn't require them to do something, and it doesn't make their existing properties non-conforming.
That means even the Brisbane Village, for example, can, they chose to stay the same, they can, or?
So no zoning changes are proposed for the commercial properties. The only areas where the overlay zones apply are to the housing sites. So on this map here, it's the color code, if you look at the orange or red area, those are areas of no zoning changes at all. So right now, 125 Valley is TC1, and Brisbane Village Shopping Center is NCRO1, Neighborhood Commercial. So those stay the same, no changes are proposed.
And if the owners decided not to go along with the plan, then they can still stay the same the way it is now?
Right. So the owners of the properties that are having overlay zones, they can choose to not do anything new to their properties?
Okay.
So the development standards in chapter three, these are talking about actual building design, articulation, setbacks, height, which I'm not sure if I have in here, but we can go over that later. Site design and parking, so the actual parking ratios, requirements for bicycle parking, and requirements for landscaping in open areas, so your minimum landscaping and yard requirements. These standards also require, from our council members' original alternative, that the development along Park Lane dedicate a community garden area. The development standards also address proposed circulation in the plan area. So this is the circulation diagram. It's figure 12 in the plan, and it shows basically completing all of, currently have a fairly broken network of sidewalks in this area, and no real dedicated bike facilities. So what this plan is proposing is really connecting all of the disconnected sidewalks and then developing additional bike lanes and dedicated bike facilities. It also looks at existing transit stops. Okay, so moving on to the design guidelines chapter. So again, the design guidelines address both the residential development and commercial. It's where we establish the commercial vision. It serves, so design guidelines are different from development standards in a variety of ways. of ways. So they serve as criteria for evaluating a project proposal during the application and approval process, and they address the elements that aren't really easily quantifiably measured. So where a setback is very easy to determine compliance with, it's either five feet or it's not, design guidelines are the more qualitative and do require a little discretion or freedom or creativity on the part of a developer in meeting them. So for the residential areas, the guidelines look at architectural design, so emphasizing the need for a really high-quality architectural design, something that is unique and creative, much like the development that we see today in Brisbane, requiring high-quality materials, sustainable building design and site design, looking at the actual feeling of new development being connected to the street and not necessarily walled off or fortified, looking at incorporating access for pedestrians, both from the street and within the development itself, looking at multifunctional spaces, plazas, incorporating creative ways to have open space on a building, so, you know, a roof garden, looking at incorporating public art, context-appropriate landscaping. These are all addressed in the design guidelines for residential. So in the commercial design guidelines, again, this is where the vision is really established for what the community had expressed in terms of improvements or enhancements to the existing retail we have. So the emphasis in these guidelines is on kind of pedestrian-friendly and intimate buildings. So again, not significantly larger in scale than what we have today, and in fact, maybe lower scale than what's out there today, for spaces to be appropriately sized and flexible so that it could be used by a variety of tenants. And then looking at incorporating a lot of interaction with the outdoor environment, so whether that's outdoor dining or vendors that are out of doors, using plazas and walkways to kind of activate the streetscape and pedestrian environment. So again, kind of the same standards as for residential architectural design. We're looking for really diverse and high-quality architectural styles. There's a focus to think about protecting views, making sure that the new structures are comfortable to use all year round, and we, as we have many different weather events during the year. Site design, really looking at how buildings are placed in relation to preserving solar access, taking advantage of the sun. Again, emphasis on outside spaces where possible and sustainable elements, like using permeable paving and materials. There's also guidelines for landscaping, for making public art that's functional and beautiful. We also look at enhancing our transit stops, again, with high-quality designs that are also functional. The design guidelines also address some improvements to properties fronting Bay Shore Boulevard, some of which are city-owned, some of which are privately owned. These really are focusing more on enhancing aesthetics, so whether that be through landscaping, which is properly maintained, or actually looking at gateway elements like signs or public art, these are all encouraged in the design guidelines. The plan doesn't propose any land use changes, so there's a few city-owned parcels on the east side of Bay Shore, a tunnel, that are currently vacant, and the plan doesn't program anything for those lots, but they are in the plan area. Design guidelines also propose some improvements for the streets in the plan area. So you can see on this slide, we've shown the proposed Old County Road street section, as well as Park Lane. So just some common elements here. On both of these street sections, they're proposing sidewalks on both sides of the street, bike lanes, and one, on one side of the street, on-street parking. So it's very different from what is actually out there today. And the last part of the plan is the plan adoption administration. So basically, the plan will go through the typical public hearing process. So again, July 18th, you guys will be holding a public hearing for the plan. Well, you'll take public comment and deliberate and make a recommendation to the city council. City council will then hold their own public hearings, hopefully in August or September. And actual plan adoption will occur by resolution for the general plan amendments that are required to reflect the new residential land uses. And the zoning text amendments will be adopted by ordinance, so those would establish the PAOZ1 and PAOZ2 districts. And then once the plan is adopted, the plan will be administered in basically two different avenues. So for residential projects that comply with chapter three, so the physical development standards, and chapter four, the design guidelines, would be administratively reviewed. So this is the process here. On this chart, basically leads you to the actual review process. So if it complies with chapters three and four, it's administrative design review by the community development director, and potentially would be eligible for a building permit. If it's a residential project that does not comply with the standards in chapter three or four, so it's not the height maximum, it's not the setbacks that are required, or they're using different site design standards that don't comply with chapter four, then it would go straight to the normal discretionary review process. So design review before the planning commission, as well as any other permits that may be required based on the project, and then potentially on to city council review before it could actually get planning approvals in advance to building permit. And the last aspect of the plan that we'll touch on is the idea of community benefits. So the draft plan does not actually propose a community benefits program. It does address, chapter two and section 2.8 briefly addresses the idea of community benefits. So basically, community benefits program, it kind of balances the needs of a developer with the desires of a community. For the city, it gives you the opportunity to get additional amenities, whether that's open space or any of the options listed here that might be important to the community to have, but aren't necessarily required. And benefits to a developer basically would be, you know, building a development that doesn't quite comply with whatever the municipal code requires, whether that's the unit number or size or parking regulations. So basically, they're asking for something in return for a community benefit. So the city can consider community benefits subsequent to the plan adoption, and it's something that if you guys want to kind of think about, and maybe we can discuss more at the public hearing, if you have some ideas on what you might want to see in that type of program, I think that would be good for you guys to engage with at your public hearing. So that ends our presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Julia, for an excellent, excellent presentation. What I will do is I will have the commissioners have any questions. We start with that, and then anybody in the audience want to ask any questions. So we'll start with Commissioner McInnes.
We could start with someone else first.
Someone else, okay.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
I have a question about the overlay zoning as it relates to the commercial development areas. Well, actually, there's no zoning change there. Okay, well, I answered my own question. Never mind. I have no more questions.
No more questions, okay. About Commissioner Cunningham.
I think I need to foment this a little before I have questions, so I don't have anything right now either. It's like, that's a lot of information.
So this meeting is going much smoother than I thought it will be, because none of us have any questions. But I do have a couple of questions. This may be related to the second part of public hearing, but I thought I would bring this up. Now, this plan is strictly voluntary, right? I mean, the property owners don't have to do it, and also, there is no provision for financing if they want to go through the entire new process and build the new buildings and all that. But what about if the, like, sometimes you have the grandfather clause or something like that, where if the property is sold, the new owners have to comply with this plan, or they can continue the way it is?
They can continue. The overlay zone would be run with the property, whether it's under current ownership or whether it's sold, because we're not creating nonconforming rights here that need to be exercised or disappear. So it would run with the land sort of in perpetuity.
So this particular plan may just stay in the paper. It may not be implemented, because there's no way to force the property owners?
That is correct. As envisioned and as structured, that's the case.
Okay. Is the council going to have some kind of a session or survey to see how many of the property owners are willing to buy into this plan and any sort of future forecast as to what's going to happen? Because what's happened is we had the similar type of plans for the downtown and all that several times, and many times, we spend all this time here and go through this plan, and then it just sits in the back, and nothing happens. So if we are really serious about that, then I think we have to go a second step and see how we can implement that, whether one of the choice will be if the owner is changed, then maybe that's possibility, or some other creative ways to implement this, otherwise it's just going to sit there. And that's my concern, because I've seen too many of those over the 17 years I've been on the planning commission. So I think when the public hearing process, we may discuss that part, and maybe you will have some answers from the council. Maybe we can ask them, too. There might be some directions in that, so that we have some way to implement that.
Certainly, in discussions with the various subcommittees and when the council sort of saw some of the preliminary work, they were aware of sort of the overlay approach and the idea there would be either or, and at the discretion of the property owners. Certainly, the council could always change that. If that's their desire, they could change the zoning and make, you know, the current uses nonconforming, and eventually, they'd phase out over time. That wasn't the council's policy direction. If as a council or as a commission, you ultimately want to make a different sort of recommendation, you're free to do that. The property owners have been advised of this process and notified of tonight's orientation, as well as the public hearing, so. And certainly, early on in conversation with the property owners, the idea of having a flexibility of an overlay was quite important to them in terms of their receptivity to this whole idea. And then lastly, in terms of the economics, I think Julia touched on, there was some economic work done, and, you know, certainly, under current market conditions, residential is potentially feasible. So I mean, I think there's some confidence that if the city were to approve, you know, the plan as envisioned with the kind of densities and the structure, that there's a potential this plan could be implemented on the residential side.
Yeah, my primary concern was the teachers association. They have the couple of big parcels sitting here, and in the past, we tried to do something with that and never got anywhere with that. So that's one of the things that I'm looking at it. And I think the, I will not go further into that, because we can discuss that at the public hearings. So anybody else, any commissioners have any questions? Go ahead, call in.
Yes. Thank you. I would like a couple of clarifications, if I might. I don't remember the complete acronym, but we have essentially two zoning overlays for residential Area 1 and Area 2. Area 1 being along Park Place across from City Hall and what is now, I believe, the existing post office. And then we have an Area 2 along Park Lane, which at present, tell me if I'm wrong, are three industrial-type buildings. When we look at the average square footage, the ones where the post office currently is located are also quite small, averaging 760 square feet. Why were those included in Area 1 with the townhomes, which average 1,000 to 1,400 square feet, instead of being included with the ones on Park Lane, which are also small? It just doesn't seem to make sense how they got included in Area 1.
So the development on the current post office site was envisioned as more of a kind of cluster development type, if you will, something that's a lower scale, not quite a multifamily development, where you have, you know, one building or a couple bigger buildings with many units. They were envisioned as kind of smaller individual units, more, almost like a townhome style. So it was due more to that actual, like, the physical product type that was desired by the council ad hoc subcommittee as to why we grouped it together with, you're right, on Park Place, the townhome that are shown conceptually are a bit larger units, and the ones at 280 Old County are a bit smaller, but their physical form is the same kind of product type that we're looking for.
So it was the building structure rather than square foot?
Building structure, the different requirements for private yards. You know, if you look at, for the multifamily development in the PAOZ2, we require a certain amount of yard area, for example, per unit, but say that it could be communal area that you average out, whereas in the PAOZ1, there's actually requirements for each unit to have dedicated space, whether that's a yard or a rooftop deck or whatever. So that's kind of a physical difference in the desired product type that really differentiated the traditional multifamily from the smaller unit housing and townhome housing.
Okay, thank you. And second clarification, if we may, from the previous workshops with MIG and talking about reconfiguring Brisbane Village, drawing passersby, and in our large version where it talks about with residents and employees, they're being limited opportunities for retail. I think that that's rapidly changing with 15 housing units to the north and 7,000 to our south, and the big Oyster Point development at Sister Cities. This is already becoming out of date. So my point here was, we talked about in other workshops accessing Brisbane Village through Valley Drive, and that has changed according to this current draft plan. And I've noted that there's an entrance on Bay Shore in the middle of the shopping center, and there's the existing entrance on Old County. And could you please address why the access on Valley Drive was not retained?
Yes, so something I didn't go in as much detail on, we also had Hexagon Consulting as transportation consultants, and when they looked at potentially having either a driveway or actual, like, new roadway access from Valley Drive, they found that for safety reasons, it's really not a great location. So that part of Valley curves, I mean, it's not a significant curve, but it's, you know, there's site distance concerns. I think the city engineer raised a lot of concerns with that as well. In fact, we had actually initially looked at whether we could have multiple entrances along Bay Shore Boulevard to the commercial area, and again, for safety reasons, the one that's shown here, and that's proposed in the design guidelines, it's just one and it's right-in only. So to say, you know, in a short way, it was really for safety reasons. It just ultimately wasn't found to work out. And then I did just want to say, the Strategic Economics who did the economic analysis, they did look at future and planned development in San Francisco and South City as well, and their economic white paper, which is on the website, does show basically a comparison of the trade areas for each of the planned or existing shopping centers. And for whatever reason, I think it's a three-mile trade area, we at Brisbane Village, it's because there's all these competing shopping centers or town centers, whatever form they may be in, we're still not capturing the minimum traffic, because that traffic's being captured by other, either to the north or to the south of us, by other developments. So they did look at that, and it is something that they considered. And certainly, you know, there is a lot of daily traffic on Bay Shore. It's something like 20,000 trips, and those trips aren't, the economic analysis posited that all of those trips- And those trips aren't, the economic analysis posited that all of those trips right now aren't really being drawn into the existing center. So that's why a lot of the improvements that are contemplated are focused on actually making the center a little bit more facing to Bay Shore, a little more easily accessed from Bay Shore, to say, okay, maybe we can't rely on thousands and thousands of new customers, but we might be able to better attract the people that are already driving by.
So could you clarify on Valley Drive where they were actually considering the entrance originally?
So actually adjacent to, and I'm going to bring the light down again. So right now, 125 Valley, yeah, go to the, circulation. Bear with us. So right now, so here's Valley. This is the driveway for 125 Valley Drive. And we were looking at basically this area as being a potential, you know, say the retail development was actually reoriented to face Bay Shore this way, maybe we could have taken access from Valley here, and the parking area would have been somewhere around here. So again, it was this area where you have people that are right now turning left onto Park Lane, and that's not a protected turn, which is, you know, lots of conflict potentially there. And then you have truck traffic coming down Valley that if someone's wanting to slow down and turn right, could potentially have safety impacts there as well, plus with the Bay Shore intersection right here. So again, if you want to look, the Hexagon Consulting white paper is also online, and they detail, they also talk about in 2014, when ULI did their technical assistance panel, something that came out of that was a recommendation to look at potentially extending visitation at, well, Old County Road, really, this way as well, which honestly, I think the analysis really, again, for feasibility purposes, it's just not, it wasn't a great, it wasn't a very safe kind of connector. But Alternative C that MIG created that was presented in June of last year, did look at potentially modifying that, which I think we have here. So Alternative C, you know, it's not exactly what was proposed from the ULI TAP, but it's kind of the same idea, so just kind of making a more direct access to visitation from Valley. And that really didn't receive any traction at all.
I objected to this when I went to the workshop at that time. I think it's a very dangerous way to enter into the valley because of the curve as well as the truck traffic, plus the signal is so close. So what's going to happen is it's going to cause the congestion and backing.
Right. So, and you know, before MIG brought it to, it was vetted as a viable alternative through Hexagon, this particular configuration, but yes, I mean, it was, it's pretty rife with the potential.
It's not a good situation there, put the entrance there.
I have one more question. Related to the plans that replaced the post office with residential, was any discussion made about a potential relocation of the post office, and were any conclusions drawn from that?
And the answer is yes. So it was very important, I know for the subcommittee, I won't speak for them, but our takeaway from their conversations were, yes, we don't want to lose a post office here. So the plan actually proposes relocating a post office somewhere, either in the development or somewhere else in town, basically as a requirement of developing that site. And you know, that site is not owned by the US Postal Service, it's leased, yeah. So I think that, again, won't speak for the council subcommittee, but the interactions and meetings that we had, you know, that is a factor, you know, it's not, it may not be a permanent location anyway, and I think that was a reason why it was, and I think the commissions probably looked at that location before in some of your prior housing element discussions too, for that very reason. But yes, there is consideration for relocating post office.
I will also be very concerned about entrance through from the Bay Shore Boulevard, because that's a high-speed corridor, and unless we're going to have a dedicated line to get into that, and I think we can go into detail when it's public hearing process again, but that will be, you know, very carefully designed, otherwise we're going to have a problem.
Yeah, sorry if I could.
Turn lane, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it'd be a write-in-only, dedicated turn.
Boulevard also.
Yeah.
Yeah. The city engineer worked a lot with MIG on this. Obviously, that's his primary concern. This is a 45, currently 45 mile an hour arterial.
Right.
Yeah, although, so part of the recommendation within the design guidelines is to adopt a suite of traffic calming measures, so that could be a variety of things. If the city wants to consider maybe lowering the speed limit there, or there's actually physical street design solutions that can slow traffic as well. So that was something really important to the city engineer, is if we're going to have an entrance, that it be properly engineered and designed, and that we slow traffic down.
Yeah. Another problem is the Valley Drive is very close too to that, so, and it's a very, very heavy truck traffic coming through there. So that's another concern, but that's later on. Any other questions?
I would just like to point out that if we're concerned about the curve on Valley Drive, why are we not concerned about the entrance at the curve on Old County? It's the same problem. It's existing, and it is a problem, because cars can't see, they pull out into the lane to try to see to get out. So I just think that deserves a little more consideration, perhaps moving that entrance.
Yeah, I think those are the.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely a comment that you can bring forward.
Any other questions? Okay, any members of the public wants to say something? Come on over. Ms. Carolyn Parker.
Hi. I wanted to know more about the low and moderate housing. What are the incentives to build? And if the larger structures for the multifamily dwelling were to be zoned and built, then would there be low and moderate housing being built at the same time, or not really?
The city does have inclusionary zoning requirements for a certain percentage of the units in multifamily to be reserved for low and moderate income housing. So that would be one way to ensure some portion of that. The other issue is back to the community benefit sort of aspect. If a development wanted to exceed sort of the city's provisions for, you know, requirements for low and mod income housing, you know, that could be something that would come up as part of a community benefits package in exchange potentially for some relief from the city council to some development standard or whatever. So those are the two ways I think that could be achieved.
Okay, thank you.
Please state your name first.
Tony Vireos. My understanding that the areas of the commercial overlay are all voluntary, so.
Entire project is voluntary.
Entire project is voluntary at this point.
Yeah.
But in particular, the shopping center area, where all the different variants have been considered for entrances and exits and the placement of buildings to replace everything that's there now, essentially. All of those things are speculative in nature. If, I'm wondering, based on that understanding, then if the owners of the property actually did agree to make changes, and they didn't like the designs of MIG that the planning commission and the city may have already approved at that point, years prior, I assume then they would be able to come in with their own architectural designs and say, oh, we've got a better idea, look at it. Would that not be appropriate?
Yes.
Then that's great, thank you.
Okay.
There's a flexibility, right?
Right. So there are some components of the commercial area vision that carry over into the design guidelines. So any new commercial development, if the design guidelines are adopted, they would apply to commercial redevelopment as well. So if there was an element to the design guidelines that, for whatever reason, the property owners did not want to bring forward, they would be asking basically for relief from compliance with that design guideline. But yes, it's all voluntary. The conceptual land use design framework is not a master plan. It's a concept.
Anybody else? How about the representative from Chamber? Want to say a few words here, what your thoughts are?
Mitch Bull, President of the Chamber, as well as the Economic Development Director. And, you know, I think a lot of work has gone into this over the last two to three years. And it really, it is a zoning guideline and overlay just to give the city and to give the property owners some kind of benefit to do a higher and best use, which is ultimately what we'd like to see. I mean, we have 50- to 60-year-old warehouses that could be reconfigured into something attractive, that could meet the housing needs, et cetera. But again, you know, if a developer is happy getting $2 a square foot, and they can continue to do that. There are seven different property owners involved in this. DCT is one of the largest, they have the warehouses on Park Lane. So I mean, they could make one decision to change it if they would like, but it's all voluntary. But we give people the flexibility as the goal to do something in the future if, to change some of these sites as they reach the end of their actual working life. The commercial space is a little different in that it's, you know, it's owned by a family trust, and it, you know, it's almost fully leased, almost, and it's generating revenue. So I mean, where I think it's, the design is probably dated, and it doesn't face Bay Shore as well as we would like it to, you know, I've looked at different groups there on Westborough Boulevard. There was a complete, an older shopping center that was completely redone in the Daly City, South City area. And it's completely different, and it's drawing good traffic. You know, if you draw a three-mile radius, there's enough people to support the shopping center, as the shopping center is today. But, you know, you can't necessarily determine what exact retailers would go in, you know, you can never really know that. But again, it's up to an owner or a developer of the shopping center that has a vision down the road. I think we have the ability to be flexible and give them the flexibility to do something down the road if they choose to, but it is voluntary.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
So a couple thoughts, and then they're just thoughts at this point. One is that I would love it if the design guidelines included something about, including the art deco flair that we have on visitation, and I think the new project on San Bruno's also considering that. I think it really helps characterize our town from sort of its foundation era, and I'm personally, I'm never thrilled with modern architecture. There's always, the newest stuff is always the first to look dated, in my opinion. So I would really like it if, I don't know if that's more appropriate to council or to you at the commission, but to possibly encourage people to go in a sort of art deco way. I had a question through the chair, respect to staff, and I heard that they included the new parcel that was the post office to lower some of the densities, and that gives me concern, because if we're starting off with lower densities, then we're sort of giving away the horse and the cart to developers. I think we should really start with kind of the maximum, asking the maximum density to keep those units small and more affordable, and to also keep the pressure up on the developers in terms of community benefits. So I would like to see that maybe backed off from. And the other thought I had, whoa, that just went, I had it there. Shoot.
There is no five-minute limit, so you can.
Yeah, I'm just embarrassed, because it was like right here in my mouth, and then it flew away. So I'm going to have to remember. Yeah.
Maybe you can, you can reserve that for the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. So it was the building style, the density, and, okay, I'm just going to have to let it go. Sorry, guys, thanks.
No problem. Anyone else before we say goodbye to this part of review? No one else?
Through the chair? Oh, sorry. Could we respond to the question that was?
Okay.
Was that okay?
That's fine.
So, so the housing element, so the question was, why is the density a minimum and not a maximum, if I understood it correctly? And the reason is, the housing element.
She says that's not.
No? Okay.
Yeah, no, I always, I always understood there was a housing density, but my understanding from your presentation was that they reduced the density from the original vision. No? When they added that extra? You said something about.
Yes, because if you do the mathematics of getting the number of units, you know, the state minimum, which is always a floor, the 20 minutes, 20 units minimum to the acre, when you didn't have the post office site, the densities, particularly on the Park Place, went up. So yes, by doing that, they were able to lower the densities to closer to 20. I think the subcommittee's thought was that by lowering the density, and if a development wanted to come in with something higher than that, that would be the better vehicle to extract some additional community benefit by allowing a higher density than what this plan might have envisioned.
Okay, I see your point, and it's a point well taken, thank you. And the other thing I was going to say is that.
You remember?
Yes, I remembered. Thank you, guys. Sometimes it just takes a moment, is that we shouldn't lose sight of this, much as I would love to see this developed, at least in the short-term part of it is just making arena numbers, that's where the fat is in the fire. So I really hope that this project can, whatever the final incarnation is, move forward with all of our blessings and little kisses.
Okay.
Okay, because we do need to fulfill those requirements, and the way it works, even if it's never built, if it's zoned, it makes the requirements. As I understand it, staff can correct me if I'm wrong. So we need to.
They'll need a lot of kisses, though.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else before we close this phase of park site?
So, okay, one other response. So regarding the guidelines and having architectural style recommendations, I just wanted to reiterate. So then the design guidelines, we didn't end up, the draft does not recommend a particular architectural style. But if that's something that you guys wanted to recommend, of course, you could.
I'm surprised that Carolyn didn't mention foam-based design, whatever. You probably have forgotten about that for a long, maybe you want to bring this up in the hearings. Okay, and if no one else, then we, this part of the draft park site, precise plan, we introduce to all of you. Next one will be the public hearings, and that's on July 18, 2017. Hopefully, a lot of people will show up at that meeting. So thank you very much, and we'll move on to our next item, which is items initiated by the staff. by the staff. What we have in the store.
I don't have any items to bring up this evening. Oh, I guess we can just verify the summer schedule.
Well, the email, we had asked you guys about your schedules, and thank you all for getting back to me. So, and then I emailed you guys also this week. The council is taking the July 13 evening meeting for Baylands deliberation, so that meeting is canceled. Your next meeting would be the July 18 special meeting. And then you have one more regular Thursday meeting on the 27th before we potentially switch our meeting dates, which is coming up in your next item. So our summer schedule is gonna be changing.
Changing, okay. Items initiated by the commission. So this will be the Resolution PC-3-17 to change regular planning commission meeting dates to the second and fourth Tuesday of every month effective August 1st, 2017. And that memo has gone to the council, right? And no problem yet?
No, you'll need to adopt the resolution tonight.
Okay, I did sign something this.
That related to the request for the, sort of the all committee commission workshop that you wanted the council to hold. That's what got signed by the chair and has been delivered. This relates to adopting this first resolution, PC-3-17. That's to change your, formally change your meeting dates, so you'll need to take.
Okay, so who wants to make a motion to approve the Resolution PC-3-17? It was your resolution, so.
All right, I will therefore motion that we adopt the Resolution PC-3-17 to change the regular planning commission meeting dates to the second and fourth Tuesday of every month effective August 1st.
So we got the motion from Commissioner Anderson.
A second now.
Second from Mr. Ms. Cunningham. Okay, we'll, now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So move? And the commission, and the council doesn't have any problems with this, right? I mean, as far as you know.
They've been advised of your proposed change. This doesn't require council approval, though? It's your, your meeting, your process, I guess.
Okay. Okay, the next, next item is correspondence from, from me, actually, regarding suggested planning commission work program items. And we distributed to all of you the items that were submitted by Mr. Ray Miller. You got the copy also, right?
I got the copy from the city, but I never got anything from you.
I guess I.
Maybe you've got an old email.
Maybe I have to change, look at your email now. So any comments or how are we going to work on that, John?
I think as a commission, I mean, I'm glad to entertain any questions from the commission on any of these items, or, but I think again, it's become sort of a commission, collective commission decision what exactly it is you want, or what you want done with this. I'm just, you know, it had come up, it was sort of out there, and I thought we better agendize it to air out a discussion in an appropriate forum.
What I suggest to do is that in the next meeting, we can bring this up, and we have a list of all the items that we have. And when, then I will ask all the commissioners here whether we want to go further with this or not. Maybe some of the items, we don't want to proceed with that, maybe put it in the backburner. Others, we may want to proceed, and then we can come up with some kind of a schedule as to how we can incorporate that into our meetings. We don't have to take the whole thing at one time.
I mean, I could walk, I mean, these all have a certain status, you know, if that's helpful, or we can, you can agendize it another day. It's totally up to you, I don't really.
Yeah, the status will be good, too, that from your perspective, with a lot of these items that are related to incomplete items. And you can send us a memo saying that these are the items that are complete or incomplete.
I'd rather not send, I mean, if we have it agendized, I'd rather just discuss. I don't really want to generate more correspondence back and forth on something we can, I can go through in five minutes and.
Yeah, that's fine, too, so.
I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so this list was generated by a member of the general public, not a list that was generated by you.
That's right.
Right? So because this really wasn't something that you came up with, and this list has been floating around by these same people for many, many years, that they, they want us to do what they want us to do. I do have a problem with that, because the city council appoints the planning commission as independent thinkers, and that we should be not coerced into doing the bidding of anybody on the general public. So if this list is valid, and it is, I don't think we should be asking staff to come up with things that we should or should not be doing off this list. I think this list should go to the city council, and if the city council wants us to action any of the items, they should be the ones that make the decision. Because right now, this list has come from a member of the general public manipulating us into doing their bidding, and I'm not okay with that.
I totally disagree with you. I don't think there was any, I didn't see that they're trying to manipulate that. All they were trying to do is helping the planning commission to see that these are the items that are incomplete. And as I see it, planning commission is at the discretion of the public. We are not something that we're sitting here on a big pedestal and saying that nobody can tell us anything. Public have the rights to say anything we want. That's why we're gonna discuss the items that were submitted. And some of the items may not be necessarily we want to see it, but I don't see any problem anybody asking me that I'd like to see this to be on the agenda, because we serve the public. And public is the one that appoint, they said that we need to have a planning commission here who will look at our concerns. And I don't see that there is, that somebody's agenda here and they want to do this for, they're trying to manipulate us in any way or anything. If that's the case, then maybe we should just get rid of the planning commission, because we are at the discretion of the community. That's why we are here. And I don't see it, and it may be whether it's Mr. Ray Miller or anybody else, they have the rights to submit whatever they want to do. It's up to us whether we want to look at that list and whatever items we think worth discussing, we can discuss. The items that are not worth discussing, and then we say that, let's say this aside. But I don't want to second guess and say that that was their intention and this where they're trying to direct us, or we are not, we are not a herd that somebody can just pull our string and say, let's go. And I'm open to any suggestion. Anybody in the community can submit their concerns, and I will be more than happy to accept that and bring it to the commission. And this is an open forum. When we bring those items, and if you're concerned, you can say, no, I don't want to be part of this, or I want to be part of that. That's perfectly okay.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Some of these items look familiar to me. And it also seems that some of these items are already on the schedule, so I was wondering if staff could identify which of these were already coming up, either with a specific or a general date, time in the near future?
Well, let's see, one and two are private applications, so, I mean, once the application is final, then the environmental analysis has been completed, they'll be scheduled. That'll be later this calendar year. So that's one and two.
Could you clarify on number one, though? I thought that number one, the soils processing was operating on an expired permit, so I'm not sure why that's a private application that's on their timeline.
That's, they're operating under a MOA that the city council authorized as a bridge to them getting to this permit back to the.
I thought that's expired, too.
So that's my question. Is that unending? There's no time limit for the current?
That is all based, the criteria that the council established with that were, were based on the site's capacity, heights of, of material. So that's, there was no, there was no time deadline for that MOA, so that's incorrect.
But what we can do as a, as a commission, we can say that this is a matter of concern that's been sitting there as an MOU for such a long time. We like to see what steps we can take to bring it so that they can.
It's a private, I mean, there's, what exactly are you, I mean, there's a process of an environmental review that's being undertaken at an administrative level. I'm not sure what drivers the commission has to basically manage how private applications proceed and the pace they proceed.
The perception here is that they have been dragging for a long time, and we are letting them do this with the MOU. And it's time that we should set up some kind of a schedule as to when they're gonna finish that. Otherwise, it's gonna be years before they submit the application to us and continue their operation the way it is. So that was the reason to set some kind of a timeline as to when this is gonna be done, and the staff can meet with the, with the developer and say that this is what, tell us when you're gonna be here, and inform us as to when this will be on the agenda. Otherwise, are we gonna be waiting forever?
Well, I mean, you can do what you want, I guess, as these items, all these applications are in process, so.
Yeah, I sometimes have a problem when there is no timeline for anything, and we just continue waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting, and leave it up to the developers. But this particular project has some impact, environmental impact, and we need to assess that and, and see when it can be done. Go ahead, I'll give you the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you. Since everyone on the commission knows what you're talking about, and most of the people, if this is being broadcast, or anybody who's here probably doesn't know what you're talking about, I think in the interest of transparency, it would help a lot to have somebody read that list, so we could understand who's who and what it's about. That's number one. Number two, I just heard a response from John Swickie that made me think I might have an idea what one of those applications is about. And I wouldn't want to speculate. But if I am right about what I think I heard, then I'm very disappointed in the way it's been handled up to this time, because I've written to the city more than one occasion myself, saying that I have a big concern about the way the Baylands development project was allowed to originally be permitted for the concrete and dirt reprocessing facilities, because to my understanding, it wasn't done with a widely noticed public meeting and public hearings and an environmental impact report in advance, the way the current Baylands process is. And it's been going on for many years, I'm not sure exactly how many now, but it's been.
Several years.
I think over twenty years. It's a long time. And when I asked about it myself, I was told, well, it was done that way because it was supposed to be a temporary operation. And I looked at Webster's dictionary for the definition of temporary, and I looked at Black's Law Dictionary for the definition of temporary, and you know what it says? Anything that's not permanent, that is a useless definition. And so in terms of public planning and permit process, it would seem that any city or county would have some standards of thirty days, sixty days, six months, one year, three years, something that they would advise the public of, so everybody would understand what they're looking at in the future. So that even if it was well within the authority of the planning director to make this decision, and all done within, you know, best purpose, you know, best, best intentions, no intentions involved at all, if the public didn't like it when they found out about it, they could say, okay, well, at least it's only for six months. It's only for a year. It's only for three years. But when it's for twenty years, it's for twenty years too damn long. And I'm very upset that the city hasn't already taken steps, not the planning commission, but the city council, that nobody bothered to push very hard for air quality monitors. And I went to a meeting just yesterday in San Francisco at the Bayview-Hunters Point Environmental Justice Task Force, where all the federal EPA, the state EPA, the city of San Francisco's environmental department, as well as the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and Department of Toxic Substances were all represented. Those agencies have been meeting up there for two years, and I've been, I only missed one meeting so far, their monthly meetings. And I've been bringing this up to those people there, asking them. And Golden Gate University Law Department recently pushed an investigation about three cement plants in San Francisco, and found numerous violations, some operations that were not permitted. Bay Area Air Quality Management District came back and said, well, part of it's not permitted because it's not required to be, because they're just dredging bay mud and it's already wet. But guess what? They don't have any systems in place to verify that, the moisture content. So my concern is that if we have, if we have laws, ordinances, and rules in place that make it look like we're protecting the public, when we're really not doing a damn thing, except pushing paper around, then I don't feel well protected. And I'd like to know that we've had qualified experts do the science that would indicate to all of you and the rest of us in the community that there's no danger involved with those current processes that we've been exposed to for twenty years. And when I see that in writing, then I'll be able to breathe a little easier. Thank you.
Thank you very much. But in any event, what I want to make, stress the point here is that we need a schedule of some of the open projects that have been sitting there. And if we had to go to the, if we had to write a letter to the, to the city council, I will more than happy to do that, because this project has been brought up many, many times, and I heard from many people that there is nothing, no movement on this, and this MOU is sitting there for a long time. And I think it's about time that we should do something, there should be some action on that. So that's, that's my take on that.
That's what I suggested, is that this list go to the city council and ask them.
Not this particular list, each one of the items we will, some of the items we can discuss here. Not everything has to go to the city, because some of the items are like, like the, like the municipal code, based on the, what was the planning commission agreed to. That municipal code was not, you know, refreshed, it's not been done. That has nothing to do with the city council action, this has to do with the planning here. Because we deliberated that, for example, parking ordinance, and it's not in the, I'm not saying that's there or not, I'm just giving an example. So that was a strictly a planning process here, and it was not done because of the Baylands projects and all of that. So this list has a lot of these kind of items, and it's not a bad idea to have some kind of a time schedule or some, some, some way to identify that we're gonna do it in certain fashion, and it will be done by the end of 2020 or whatever. I'm not concerned about staff drop every, all their work and just look at that. But that was the, my take on this, that I need some kind of a guideline. And in engineering term, we say that the point, you know, the point of least resistance, where we can get to that. So that's what I'm looking at, each of the project or undone projects, if we can identify that and how, when we're going to address that, and when it's gonna be completed. And there is no pressure on, from me to the planning commission, the planning director, that you drop everything and do this tomorrow. So I think it's like there's a merit to go over this list, and there might be some items like Ms. Cunningham that you mentioned that may require it to go to the city council. That's okay. But let's look at the list first, let's go over that and see which, which one we can handle it and which one we cannot. Anybody else has a comment on this? Ms. McKinn?
Oh, I've read several times through the list, and there are some things on this list that I'm not familiar with, so it's difficult to go through parts of it. Housing element zoning.
Yes, we've been handling this recently, like, we tackled a couple of them already.
Well, the only housing element implementation we have ongoing is Parkside.
Parkside, yeah.
And some of these other zoning amendments you've been doing. So again, I'm not sure what, exactly beyond what's ongoing with Parkside, you're discussing.
Well, I think the...
The Baylands housing decision is its own issue, I'm not sure...
But we already addressed a couple of those already, right? M1 zoning, that we already addressed that.
Yeah, which isn't related to that. So you're talking about item, I think you're talking about item three, but you're talking about item five?
Yeah, I didn't bring my list here, so I don't know.
Item five is completion of zoning map.
Oh, eight, you're talking about eight.
I think five and eight look very similar.
I would agree with that, I was going to bring that up as well. Because the one segues off the other.
Some of these items may be just to give you the, give us the status of that as to what's going on. For example, the status of ecology expansion. The staff may have some information as to what they're planning to do or what's in the future for us, you know.
They...
Oh, yeah. I was looking at this.
You can take that one.
Can I take that?
Yep.
Well, they have, in regard to the ecology expansion, they have an incomplete application that the city can't process until they submit a formal, complete application. So as to whether that timing, it's to be determined, I don't know when they're going to make such an application, so. It's unknown.
At this point, it's unknown, we don't know whether it's going to be done or not.
Correct.
Okay. The next item was the completion of the zoning map update for consistency with the 1994 general plan, and I think we are doing that already, right?
Well, we're working on the M1 piece. There are some pieces that really can't be completed until the Baylands is resolved in that particular subarea. If there are other particular inconsistencies, I'm aware of those two, and certainly if the commission wants to point out whatever in, other inconsistencies they're aware of, we could, you know, that's, depending on what they are and how complex they are, that's not a big problem, just move forward.
I'm not aware of any other inconsistency. I think the M1 zone was one that was, that had problems, and I think the others are okay, and the one in the Baylands, we're waiting for the process to finish. And the other one is the update to green building ordinance, and that was a status, basically, as to what's happening with that.
The city council, when we updated the building code, which is something the council does, you're not involved in that, because it's not Title 17, it's not the zoning ordinance, they adopted an update to the code this last, took effect this calendar year. And in the, as the energy requirements have gotten elevated and some of the other green building, Cal Green standards have gone up, was the council's determination at that point to make no additional changes to the green building ordinance at this point in time. We did go ahead and adopt an ordinance requiring solar, mandatory solar on both new structures, residential and commercial, I believe that was in front of, was that in front of the commission or that was just a title?
Yeah, so we brought that to the, to OSEC and to the planning commission in November of last year.
So it's done already, right?
Yes, I mean, sure, I guess your answer is...
That's what I want to do, so then this will satisfy the inquiry by that one particular individual. Because this way, I want to make sure that if somebody submitted already or written comments to us, we should respond to that. We cannot just put it in the bag and say, forget it. So that was my intention, that this way it gives them the, you know, that they were looking, he was asking about the update to green building ordinance, and we provided that, so hopefully it will satisfy that particular individual. Next one was the Brisbane Acres Revised Zoning Regulations, Rethink Means of Protecting View or Corridors. So this one here is like the, this is a suggestion as to what, are we going to look into this?
This one sits, the council has, they've seen the correspondence from OSEC, the correspondence from the council members, and they have not authorized any kind of work program for this, for the city to do anything about that at this particular moment.
So that's a good status, again, you know, I mean, that should satisfy the concerns that this individual has. And the next one is a general plan review consistency of the 1994 general plan with current zoning.
Isn't that kind of like number five?
Number five is similar to that. Is there any other items that are, that are missing that we've not addressed?
Well, I mean, the council, as you're all, the commission members who were here in the mid or early 2000s, probably Commissioner Munir, who worked on that general plan update with all those policies and went through that with the former director, well, that never did reach the point of being adopted by the city council because there was no environmental work to be done. And that whole process has been put on hold until the Baylands process plays itself out. And again, whether or not the city council at that point will be comfortable with, again, a 25-year-old plan that was looked at 15 years ago, or that they're going to want to have a fresher look at some of these policies will be a council determination.
Yeah, I think a lot of these things were discussed almost five, six, seven years ago.
More like 10 years ago.
They are already obsolete, but I think it's a good idea to have the status here so that the general public knows where it stands. Otherwise, they will have a question, what happened with this?
Sure. And short-term rentals, you passed on a recommendation probably about 18 months ago to the council about putting something to a vote, and that is, you know, all that, the council's had several subcommittee meetings about looking at a program to regulate or permit or prohibit short-term rentals.
So that's, that's what the council, they're looking at it, so that's, again, and priority work plan for commission, commission similar to council, consider adequacy of planning department resources, and if enhancement advisable, advocate to the council. So this is basically the decision we have to make as to whether the planning staff is adequate and you need more resources and all that. That's actually a good idea to discuss because it will, depends on your workload, and do you want planning commission help to go to the council and ask for more help?
Yeah, I would suggest that if this commission's interest that you maybe agendizes, develop a priority work plan, if that's something as a group you're interested in doing or not interested in doing.
Yeah.
And that can be agendized, and then we would see where that all goes.
Okay, that's...
Sounds good.
Sounds okay to me.
If I can ask some clarification, though, it seems like item number 10, to me, is something that is more in the purview of the city council. Isn't it up to council to...
Well, that was, that was the reason I said if they could look at that and figure out where they want us to spend our time.
Yeah, that's fine, that's why we look at it.
I don't want to reopen the issue of whether the planning commission represents the public or can do business at all, but just for the specific issue of directing staff.
Yeah, I would suspect that if you develop a work plan, you'd want to have the council endorse it or accept it or support it, because again, there's a resource issue. And, you know, again, they're the ones who direct the use of the resources in the city.
Yeah, but I think the planning commission role is to figure it out what kind of resources are needed because, you know, you work, whatever you provide to us, and if you don't have enough resources, the planning commission is in the position to tell that the staff is overworked, and maybe we can suggest additional help or something. Like during, during the Baylands hearing, you were under a lot of stress, a lot of work at that time, and I remember if you had to cancel a lot of, you know, ongoing projects. So again, we can discuss that at a later time, if you like, and maybe I'll get together with you also and figure out more about that and then bring it before the, before the commission.
Yeah, I appreciate, you know, your concern about the staffing levels. I think maybe the commission, you know, as representative of the community, if you have a list of things you think the commission should be doing, you know, I think probably having the council accept that or modify it, and then we'll work, I'll work with the city manager and the, and the council about the resources required to sort of achieve those objectives if they indeed believe it's an appropriate use of time and resources. So I appreciate the staffing concern, but I think if you were to kind of just work on your priority list, if you have one, and what that is, that helps drive everything else.
Okay, so may I suggest that the commissioner, if you have any priority items that you want to bring it, like Commissioner Anderson had some items before regarding the large development and all that, remember?
Oh, yes, of course I remember, but I don't really have time at this immediate juncture to...
If you have time, but it's just strictly, again, again, based on what you like to see. So it's an open forum here if you want to, that goes for all the commissioners, that if you had some items that you want to discuss, bring it up, and maybe we can put, incorporate into this plan. And same goes for the, for the general public. Yes, Ms. ... Sure.
So there's something, Barbara Ebel here, there's something I feel like is kind of getting overlooked in this process.
Mm-hmm.
And that is that you all work for the plant, the city council, I know you're all very aware of that. And when I went to the Citizens Academy, Randy told us that the city council works for the people, the city of Brisbane. So theoretically, the citizens are at the top of this heap, and I also think it's important to remember that your fellow planning commissioners are also citizens, and so that their input is, even their personal input, it should be taken as personal input, but is still valid because we are all members of this community. And regarding the work plan, I, you know, the, I think just sending it to, just asking council to tell you what to do is maybe not the best strategy at this moment because they're really busy. So if I might make a suggestion, at least, you know, what we did on OSEC was we went and had a subcommittee, and we decided on what we thought our agenda should be, and then that went to city council for their approval. We didn't make them try to figure it out for us, we figured it out for ourselves and then took their input. I am concerned about number seven. Again, that was a citizens-initiated item. There were people who were very concerned, I mean, Thomas was approved, okay. But there are citizens who feel like they took advantage of the rules to build something that was not what was intended for that site. It's also been brought up that the ridgeline views protection language is ambiguous, and so there's been a request to clarify that language and, you know, make it really concise about what it means so that we don't end up in that position again. I think that's a valid, something important to pursue.
We had a very long discussion about the, and that particular ordinance is not very clear at all.
Yeah.
And as you may recall, and I think at that time I suggested some language, but they decided to keep this the way it is now.
Yeah.
It's really ambiguous, really.
Yeah, it's kind of, so, I mean, I think, I'm with you, that I think that whatever is decided by the commission, council, and population, I'm not here to dictate that, but I think whatever is decided collectively, the language should be very clear. So that was just a couple of thoughts about those things, and I hope you'll consider them. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm fond believer that the, whatever the regulations you have or requirements that should be clear rather than ambiguous.
Absolutely.
And what happens is open the doors for all kinds of interpretation.
Yeah, you don't want to, you don't want to give the property owners false information. I mean, no, that doesn't serve them or the public.
Yeah, sometimes it's very difficult to do that, but we should try as much as we can.
Absolutely agree, thank you.
Anybody else, is that the, is that clear now? We want to discuss any further on that?
I have another member.
Oh, another member of the, you're welcome.
I also have some ideas of things that maybe the city council should look at and submit to the city coun, I mean, the planning commission should look at, and then maybe submit to the city council. So I like the idea that the private citizens should be able to present something to the planning commission. I think that's a very good idea. So I thank you, Jamil, for saying that.
It's not the idea, it's required. If I'm a public servant, I'm serving the public. So it's not the idea, it's my job to listen to the public.
Thank you.
Anybody else wants to say anything before we move on to the next item?
May I please? I don't feel like we've completely clarified something procedurally for us. I think we could take time in every single meeting, and we would be going over submissions from the public, and John would be telling us that's already before the council or it's coming later. And to alleviate our going through that, it might be beneficial to channel these suggestions, input from the public to John or Julia, and then perhaps our chair could meet with John or Julia or Ken, go over them, and if some are very quick that this is already going to be coming back in a later date, then we would know instead of taking all of our time here to go through that. It could be something added to our agenda, but it would already have been researched and vetted, and we would have answers.
Yeah, my...
And if in fact, excuse me, one second, and if in fact it was something that John said that, that's council, and you felt strongly, then you could say, well, I'd like to bring it up, that perhaps the commission would submit this question to the council. But that would give us a mechanism for knowing how to channel these things rather than haphazardly, and it would save everyone's time.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, and I was not intending to have every single little...
No, no, it's, please don't take it as a criticism.
No, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about criticism. All I'm saying is that my intention was that somebody has gone through the hassle to go and give us a list of that, I think it's appropriate to address that. And a lot of other inquiries, the staff can handle it on their own, and it will go to the staff, and they will determine, and I will be involved at least with that process. And if it's a significant item, that we can bring it before the commission, but my point is we should respond to all the inquiry, one way or the other, because it's very, very frustrating when people say that. I've been asking for 10 years and nobody responds to me, you know? I don't want to hear that, I want to say that, you know, if there is a trivial answer, just write a little note saying, this is what we did, finish, you know? So at least it's done, you know, there should be a checklist of some sort. Okay, anything else on this? John, are you, you happy with the discussion we had tonight?
So I'll agendize some sort of, what we call it, priority work plan as a commission item, and then you will sort of decide what you want to do, that's what I'm getting out of this discussion.
Yeah. Again, my priority will be to upgrade the general plan, it's 1994, and here we are in 2017. And every single time I went for interview to, with the, with the council, when I was reapplying for this, for the planning commission, commissioner, I always mentioned that it's been so long, 1994 and now, and I was promised that they will, we will look at it, and it's just continue on. So we need to have some kind of, you know, calendar to finish this. And I know that I was told that many, many times, that we're waiting for the EIR done for the Bayline. for the Bayline. That's almost finished also now, and we have a lot of information that we didn't have it before, so I think, and one of these days, I think this state is gonna come after us and say, what the hell, what's going on here? 1994 was the last plan, and you have not done, every, I think it's required every 10 years or five years?
No.
I don't remember.
The only housing element is the only mandatory...
The general plan, I think there was some kind of a thing as to when it's, nothing? No requirement?
There was some direction in the 94 plan, but there's no state requirements to update your general plan on a, other than the housing element.
Okay, so, but I think it's a good idea to have the updated general plan.
So you'll bring, when we agendize this item, you can bring that up, and whatever other suggestions as a group you have, and we can go from there.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we went to the last item, which is adjournment to the regular meeting of July 13th.
Through the chair, we'll go ahead and, since the July 13th meeting's been canceled, you'll be adjourning to the special meeting of July 18th instead, so my apologies for that.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just, since we are only four, and the quorum is always an issue, I have a prior commitment I cannot get out of on July 27th, if you might take that under advisement. If the council goes ahead and appoints another commissioner, that may not be an issue, but there's no way I can reschedule. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Julia will contact all of us to see who will be here, and then based on that, we will determine whether we will meet that day or not. Okay, so may I have the motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to the special meeting of July 18th, that is a Tuesday, 2017, at 7:30 PM.
Thank you, and...
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, we'll see.